Good evening. I'd like to call to order the council or committee of a whole meeting for February 27th. If you could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor.
President.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
President.
Councilmember Brown.
President.
And Councilmember Post.
Here.
All members present.
All right. With that, we have minutes for the February 13th meeting. Vice President Garza.
I move the minutes so the February 13th meeting, the whole meeting is written.
You have a motion on the minutes. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose passes unanimously. This is the opportunity for public comment. If there is anyone who would like to make public comment concerning the items on our agenda, if you would come down to the podium, please state your name and address for the record, and then you will have three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to address the council at this time? I see LaRetta's coming down.
Concern the park board. I appreciate that they are looking to move into a more accessible and transparent direction, and I have several comments I'd like to make that may help them do that. First off, I think there needs to be the names of the board members, their phone numbers, email addresses, and phone numbers updated and listed on the website and Facebook pages for both the park board itself and for Parks and Rec. The current list serve email address that is used to address all of the park board members at one time, doesn't follow the email format of the city's Lansing, Michigan.gov, and is not published anywhere that I could find. It does not permit one-on-one conversations with individual park board members, so I believe that they should list individual email addresses at which they can be connected. On the website, if you look at the Parks and Rec listing for the park board, you're directed to direct all conversation to the Director of Parks and Rec, Brett Koschinski. There's no referral link there for the board itself. I think that agendas should be published and online by 5:00 PM Monday prior to the Wednesday meeting, and I think that the park board chair should be putting the agenda together with input from the director, the public, and its members, rather than the director creating the agenda. They need to publish draft minutes within seven days of the meetings in order to permit input from the public into any minute corrections, and they should have published the approved minutes within two days of approval. The PDF listing on the city website for the park board members is not correct. It's dated September 22nd and hasn't been updated since. And during public comment times at meetings of the board, I think the public comment at the beginning needs to also be supplemented by the opportunity for the public to comment on any presentations during the discussion time and before the vote after each presentation. And the public should have the opportunity to add an item to the agenda before the meeting begins. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment at this time? Debra?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Ditto what she just said so nicely. I'm here to talk about trees. I've talked to this council before about trees, and trees are actually under the Parks Department. And when you look at the director's name up there on the screen, you see all the responsibilities. Nothing about forestry, nothing about trees. Look at the data. 1992, we had 30 staff in forestry. 16 in 93, we had interns, we had assistants, we had a tree nursery, everything was thriving. Now, we have a de minimis number of people. In 2021, you might have seen the City Pulse article, and the numbers are correct, the city lost 497 trees, and they replaced them with 215. That's only 43%. My concern about the trees is manifested by the fact that Consumers Power went through our neighborhood recently to do a gas conversion in preparation for the CSO project. Consumers Power used our, our city taxpayers, our forestry staff to do the work. I think it's great that our forestry staff will have a great amount of reliance on, they're wonderful people, to do oversight. We all know what Consumers has been doing in D E T E now with trees and storms. They use their own forestry staff when it's trees, but when it's below ground, they use our staff. What's the problem with that? It's our costs. In preparation for the CSO project, not only are we looking at the gas conversion, but some of you are, I've seen you enough to have been around here back in the 90s when the CSO project was done, South of Michigan Avenue. And as a result of many of the debacles there, then Mayor Hollister created an ad hoc commission, tree commission, and a report came out. And in the report, if you have not seen it, I strongly recommend you look at it, but there were many recommendations. You need to have forestry staff dedicated to the CSO projects, because if you take the Ireens and the Dominics away from the regular forestry work they're supposed to do, then, doing the CSO project, then they don't get to do what they need to do. When you look also at the canopy report that the mayor authorized to be finalized in December and distributed to us, our fourth ward that I live in has the least amount being 23% of a tree canopy. The highest amount in the city is still pretty bad, 37%. We need to work on that overall. We also need to work on a policy where if I say, "I don't want a tree in front of my house," or "I don't like that kind of tree," it should not be incumbent on me, Debra, to say I get a tree or not. This is our community. It should not be a blessing or a non-blessing by a person who owns property adjacent to city right away if the city's going to be planting trees, and that's how it's operated now. It shouldn't be. It's too political, who gets trees or who doesn't get trees, because they want them. I ask you to look at this information in light of what the park board does and our budget going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time? Seeing no one, we will move ahead in our agenda. The first item on our agenda is the Lansing Fire Department, and I see that the chief is here with us. If you could come down and take a seat at, in the well, and then if you would make sure that the green light is on, on the microphone. We have asked various departments to come down and speak to us before the budget process and talk to us a little bit about the dollars that were appropriated to them through the American Rescue Plan Act and how those are being spent, and if those items that you had requested, where they, where they are in the purchase process, and your current budget that you are in, how, how that is going. This does not have to do with the upcoming budget. We'll be receiving that from the mayor on the last Monday in March. I think that's March 27th that we'll be receiving that. So Chief, welcome.
Thank you. There we go. Thank you. Good evening, council. And I really appreciate the opportunity to come and spend some time and share some information relative to the fire department. As you may be aware, we were allocated about $2.7 million of ARPA funding that actually was earmarked for three separate initiatives within our department. Initiative number one was about $300,000 for turnout gear, which is personal protective equipment that we wear during structural firefighting or working incidents. We have placed the order for that turnout gear. The turnout gear manufacturers are running about four to six months behind as it relates to delivery. They've come in, they've sized all of our members, they've placed the order, and we anticipate delivery of our ARPA turnout gear sometime in May or June of this year. Again, this will provide a second set of turnout gear for our members, which is very, very important, because we are a very busy service delivery system, and the guys and the gals, they will soil and soak their turnout gear on a regular basis, so having this alternative set will really go a long way with not only the safety, but just the security for our members. We also were allocated $1.7 million of the $2.7 million for fleet upgrades. So what that's going to allow us to do is to buy a new aerial truck, and the cost of that aerial truck is about $1.5 million. We're going to take the other $200,000 or so, we're going to roll it over into the fleet services budget, and that will allow us to also purchase two new fire engines and two new ambulances with ARPA money and previously allocated fleet services money. So we're very, very excited about that. Again, very busy system. Our fleet, it gets utilized at a, at a very high volume, and so having a replacement plan relative to the fleet is very, very important for us. Last but not least, as it relates to our ARPA money, we set aside about $780,000 for EMS upgrade. If you remember, we recently, well, over the course of the last few months, signed a 10-year agreement with the Stryker Corporation to upgrade our ALS equipment. These were our LifePack monitors, our automatic external defibrillators, our Lucas devices, which provide for mechanical CPR. It also included power lift stretchers for all of our ambulances. So the ARPA money is going to provide three years of payment within that 10-year window of the contract agreement that we have in place with the Stryker Corporation. The equipment is already being delivered. Two weeks ago, we were able to install all of the power load stretchers into all of our ambulances, which is a significant level of safety increase for our members, because it eliminates the need for the manual lift of our stretchers that would be patient loaded. They're all automatic now, so our members are very, very excited about that. So again, $2.7 million of allocated ARPA funding. We designated it for three different initiatives: turnout gear, fleet upgrades, and EMS equipment. Are there any other questions before I move on?
Are there any questions from council at this point? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Chief, and all these things very much needed, as I've heard for all my years on council. And I just want to follow up with some of my points from when the allocation happened here. Is there anything about turnout gear, fleet upgrades, or fleet or EMS upgrades that was exasperated by the pandemic?
Not directly, but again, with the increased call volume that we recognized during the pandemic, all of that was indirectly impacted, because they are twos of the service delivery that we rolled out. And we saw a significant increase in call volume during the pandemic. We did have more of an impact to our staffing model, because what we also saw was that not only were our members being negatively impacted by COVID, but they also had to take care of family members that had some negative impacts. So to your question, yes, but not really directly, but these are all twos of our trade, and with that increase in call volume during the height of the pandemic, there were some impacts.
Thank you.
Are there other questions? Just wanted to touch back with the turnout gear. I know that when you came before Ways and Means, you talked about the carcinogens that were, ended up on the turnout gear. Can you talk a little bit more about, about that for us?
Yes. One of the products of combustion is the offloading and offgassing of not only carcinogens, but other toxins within the turnout gear. And this is another direction on why the second set of turnout gear within the modern fire service is no longer luxury. It's what we need to do, because again, that turnout gear will hold on and offload some of the carcinogenics that are part of the combustion process. Now, we do have extractors in four of our six firehouses. We do have turnout gear dryers in all of our firehouses, so we are able to wash and clean our turnout gear on a regular basis. We just implemented a gross decon policy, which will allow us to actually begin the decontamination process on the scene of just rinsing off and flushing as best we can until we can get back to the station and begin the clean process. Again, that is the value of having that second set, because we don't lose any time with our members having to possibly respond in wet turnout gear, because it's been recently washed and cleaned. We also have a contract in place where the advanced inspection of our turnout gear takes place on a periodic level. This allows us to ensure that the thermal barrier, that the, the heat resistant barrier, that the fire resistant mechanism of the turnout gear is still within the National Fire Protection Agency limits, and if it is not, it's identified, and that is an indicator for replacement also.
Okay. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. That was kind, that was my question, too, is how do you, you know, do, do each facility have the capability to clean the turnout gear? And so you answered that, where you have extractors, and how many? Four.
Four of the six stations, yes, ma'am.
So what, so what happens with the other two stations?
Well, we, we have, the battalion chief will actually serve as the courier with delivering the gear, making sure it's cleaned, it gets back to the home station, it's put up on the dryers, and our members are transitioning to that second set.
Okay. As part of the upgrades of the stations, are you guys looking to have these extractors in all of the stations?
Absolutely. That's been a discussion point, as we have met with the developers and the architects, just ensuring that, especially in lieu of the fact that we will have a second set for all of our members, that will increase the demand on the extractors. Right now, the turnout gear dryers that we're using, our firefighters have kind of crafted it in the home shop, if you will. We're moving forward, under the bond initiative, we will be looking to purchase commercial-grade turnout gear dryers that will expedite the entire process.
I appreciate that, because it's important. I mean, you know, we have firefighters who potentially can bring that stuff home to their families, and so making it easier for them to decon at the station is, is, is a safety thing for everybody, right?
Yes, it is. The instance of cancer in the fire service is, is through the roof. A lot of it is, you know, post-career, when our members have been in the business for 15, 18 years, and we're starting to see some of the negative impacts of the old way that we were doing business. Turnout gear in the backseat of your car as you go from one station to the next, you're taking it home. At one point in time, we were washing turnout gear in the same laundry facilities that we were washing linen, and it, it just was a recipe for disaster. There's been a lot of studies that have shown that there is a direct impact with what that looks like. So we look to separate that out, identify, and make sure that we've got the proper cleaning solutions, the proper mechanisms in place, ensure that until the turnout gear can actually be cleaned, it is set aside and isolated, because it is continually offgassing, and we just want to kind of reduce the probability or possibility of, of that carcinogenics and the toxins within the living areas of the firehouses.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garza, or Vice President Garza, now?
Yep. All right. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Chief, for being here. Councilwoman Spitzley brought up a good point, and it just made me think of, you know, what is your protocol for the fire trucks and the ambulances for the turnout gear? I mean, because obviously, they're sitting in there. I mean, there's only so much you can do on scene, right? Cleaning it? Before you get back to, to where you can actually really sanitize it. But, so when, when the firefighters get inside the vehicles, what's the, what's, what's your protocol to make sure that's clean as well?
As part of the gross decon policy, we're looking to kind of isolate that gear. We bag it up, and we carry it back to the stations. Prior to the rigs actually backing into the firehouses, there is a hose down, a wash down, if you will, as best we can. We have to be very, very mindful, because when it is 20 degrees outside and ice is everywhere, it may not be feasible, but we are looking to further extend and become a bit more comprehensive with what that decon policy looks like, so that it not only includes the turnout gear, but it includes the rig, the equipment. We've got the handy wipes, and we encourage our members to wash their face, neck, some of the exposed areas, until they are able to get back to the firehouse and get in the shower. So we're looking at a comprehensive approach to what that decon process looks like.
Great. Well, I appreciate you being here. I really respect all of the fire department, and whatever we can do to help, you know, with this year's budget, please let us know.
Thank you.
My only question would be, when we're looking at, as we've been talking about the turnout gear, and we're talking about washing it and extracting, is that held in a separate tank someplace, or is that flushed down the sewer system? How is that dealt with?
That, dark water, as we call it, is held in a separate tank, and we, we try to filter it as best we can, and it's held, and it can be removed completely. So at no time does it enter into the water grid system of the city or pour down a drain in a firehouse. We, we are aware that that contaminant is very toxic, and we want to be very, very careful with the disposal of it.
Okay. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. That brings up a couple of questions. The, the first one, is there like a state standard on how you address that dark water? And then, you know, a lot of, you know, the new contaminant these days is PFAS, right? And you have that, a lot of times, that, that contaminant is, historically has been in the foam and some of the processes you use to fight fires. And do we in the city of Lansing have a PFAS concern as it relates to our firefighting techniques or efforts?
I'll, I'll answer your first question initially, as it relates to that, that dark water. We definitely want to ensure that it's isolated and we have a proper level of disposal, because again, it is contaminant. Now, as it relates to PFAS, a lot of the foam, well, all of the foam that we're using here in the city of Lansing is clean foam. It's the A triple F. What we're finding, and this was something I dealt with as the fire chief in Battle Creek, because we had airport operations. That's where a lot of the foam operations come into play, is aircraft firefighting. We don't have that concern here in the city of Lansing. I meet monthly with the Metro Fire Chiefs Group, and Chief Gonzalez there at the Lansing Airport. That is an issue that he has been working with the state on, the removal of the contaminated foam and getting it replaced with, with some upgraded foam that is clean. But to your initial question, Congress, excuse me, Councilwoman, the state does not have any process in place as it relates to the dark water removal. So that's something we're working on internally, but I'm certain with the level of cancer that's in the fire service that we're exposed to, that's got to be on the radar of EPA, of State Eagle, and it would be just a matter of time before there are some mandates and some processes in place.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions about this portion of his presentation? Seeing none, you can go on and talk a little bit about your current budget.
Okay. Our current, our current budget is doing very, very well. We were instructed to just maintain a flat budget as it was developed. We've been very, very conscientious with monitoring our expenses on a monthly basis. Since I've been a fire chief over the course of the last nine months, I have implemented a couple of programs that we're going to have to look to reconcile with some line item transfers at some point in time in the reconciliation process. One of those initiatives was implementing a contract with Lexipol LLC, because there was a significant need for us to update our policy manual. And the other initiative was a strategic planning process that we recently rolled out. And so those two initiatives were not initially earmarked during budget development. So as we get closer to the reconciliation phase of this current year's budget, we're going to have to look to make some line item transfers to cover. However, we do have the ability to do just that. I've kind of stated to staff that we want to be very, very mindful in some areas, because this is an area that we're going to have to cover our initiatives that we move forward with, that were not necessarily budgeted during the approval process for this current year.
Okay. Can you tell us how many firefighters you're down at this particular point, and when you're looking at another school?
Well, we're looking at another hiring process here within the next couple of weeks. Right now, we are down about 25 firefighters. Had a meeting last week, talking to a grant writer, because we are going to be submitting a SAFER grant, which is Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response through FEMA, because we are able to identify our attrition. So we know when our members will hit their eligibility date, when they will move on. One of the components of the SAFER grant is that as long as you can absorb them into your budget, it increases your chances of an award. And we can absolutely positively do that with our hard, fast eligibility dates that we know we can target attrition. But to your question, Madam President, we are down about 25 positions right now.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. How is the, the program that was initiated to reach out to high schoolers and kind of do an on-the-job training type of thing, has that resulted in new firefighters that are from the Lansing area?
That program is working very, very well. You're speaking to the Heal Academy Fire Science Program. It is producing firefighters in the region, not necessarily to the city of Lansing. We're, we're all dealing with a very, very shrinking candidate pool, and so every fire department in the region, across the country, if you will, is, we're really struggling for highly qualified candidates. And when I say highly qualified, I don't mean just trained. I mean high character, moral courage, the type of individuals that we want providing service in our community. They are at a premium. And so the Heal Academy is working very, very well. As a matter of fact, our retired training chief is leading the effort over there as the lead instructor, and he stays in contact with me on a regular basis. Part of the challenge is that we've got ninth and 10th graders matriculating through the program, but they're not eligible to actually apply until they become 18 years of age. And with that gap, it allows them an opportunity to either work through the EMT process, through LCC, and a lot of times, based on timing, area fire departments will reach out and snag them up, and it's just kind of the price of doing business. But to your question, the program is working very, very well. We're looking for any and every creative opportunity to make it work a little better for the city of Lansing, but it is working well.
Okay. Councilmember Brown, and then Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Madam President, and, and good evening, Chief. Good to see you here today. Thank you so much for providing all the updates. You spoke about, you said that as far as your budget, you budgeting in for policy manual as well as strategic plan. I want to commend you and applaud you for that, planning and putting policies in place. Could you speak to the importance of that and why you feel that it was, you know, imperative to, to do that, and also, you know, put funds behind it to make sure that it was not?
Yes, yes, sir. It was very, very apparent upon my appointment that we've got a great organization, great people, great work ethic. What I found, that there was a lot of good stuff, good work, good productivity taking place, but it was not directed. So we had these pockets of all of this great work, and there was no true vision on where the organization was heading. And no fault of anyone, I, I think a lot of it was just tantamount to the fact that we basically had a revolving door in the fire chief's office over the course of the last five or six years. There was no consistent leadership that would dive in and conduct the heavy lift as it relates to the planning piece. So I looked for an opportunity to not only engage the community, but also to engage our members. And as I like to share with them, they are And as I like to share with them, they are my customers, just like the community are there. Those are my customers. So we need to hear from you. What do you, what do you envision your fire department looking like in three to five years? And so we contracted with a company out of the DC area, the Center for Public Safety Excellence. And, uh, they brought a facilitator in and worked with us through the strategic planning process. The reason why I was so excited to work with the Center for Public Safety Excellence is because I have a vision for our fire department to become an accredited agency at some point downstream. We've got a lot of work to do between now and then. It's nothing that's going to happen overnight, but I do feel with everything going on in this community, leadership from the DIAS, leadership from City Hall, that we absolutely positively can reach accreditation status. And the Center for Public Safety Excellence is the only, uh, vendor in the country that works with Fire Accreditation International as it relates to those processes. And the strategic plan is one of the three foundational documents that are part of the accreditation piece. So it was very, very important to, to move in that direction. Uh, once we shared that information with the membership, they were very, very excited. Yeah, I, I, I just, we had a team of about 25 members and to a member, they reached out to me. Chief, we never had an opportunity to engage. Thank you for providing us with a seat at the table. And so it generated a lot of synergy, a lot of positive energy that we're going to ride until the wheels fall off, if you will. And it's going very, very well right now. And, uh, we hope to capture some pretty significant initiatives as it relates to that. Uh, when it comes to our policy development, we have a, an S-drive, a fire department S-drive that holds all of our administrative components. And as I conducted my review of the S-drive, we, we had policy posted everywhere. And my initial thought was I need to do something here to make it easy for our supervisors to supervise, lead, and manage. We want to have resources for you to reference. You've got a question, it's two o'clock in the morning, you don't want to bother your battalion chief, you go here, pull up the policy and it will direct you. So we decided to not only clean up the S-drive, but we also moved forward with the contract of Lexipole. And the beauty of the Lexipole process is that they lead from the front as it relates to federal guidelines, federal statutes, state mandates, city ordinance, city charter, and then we have an ability to fine tune and customize what works for Lansing. And all of that is mailed into a policy manual. It's an online process. Our members can pull it up anywhere, anytime on their phone. And it's a easy reference for not only the leadership team, but for our supervisors and for our members. We've got to be very, very clear with what the expectations are. And we've got to be very clear on where those expectations can be found if there are any questions. So doing my research on the Lansing Fire Department, as I was talking to the mayor about the job, it was pretty clear that those were two areas that needed to come out of the gate, make some headway and with some progress. And, and I, I must say, nine months in, it's working very well for us.
Wow. Well, thank you so much. And, um, thank you for that leadership and, you know, having vision and policy, you know, are the tools that we need to, to truly become empowered. So thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next we have Councilmember Garza, Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Council President. So I just have a couple, a couple more questions. Um, now, when you, when you mentioned, I believe you said 25 positions that we're down right now in the?
Yes, sir.
How does our pay reflect or compare to other municipalities in the, in the area?
Well, um, from a base pay standpoint, we're comparable, but what we're finding is that a lot of organizations now, due to the competitive nature of recruitment and retention, they're offering bonuses. And I was speaking in Cabinet a, a couple of weeks ago, uh, Kalamazoo Department of Public Safety is offering a $15,000 bonus if you've got firefighter one, firefighter two, medical first response. If they provide you with an offer letter and you accept.
I'm just checking. Was that 15,000?
15,000, yes, ma'am.
One, five, comma, zero, zero.
Yes, ma'am. They will, if, if they, if they. If, if they provide you with an offer letter and you accept $10,000 bonus, once you complete Recruit Academy and additional files. So that's the environment that we navigate right now. And, and trying to stay competitive, trying to ensure that not only can we compete, but also compete for the top candidates because we don't want to settle. So as it relates apples to apples with salaries, we're, we are competitive, but the bonuses are, are where it's really making a difference. Uh, we are moving forward with a $2,500 signing bonus for paramedics with our upcoming recruitment, just trying to cause some excitement and generate some, some ideas from some folks that may be considering. We think about the $2,500 paramedic bonus. We think about the fleet upgrades that we are currently working through. We think about the bond initiative with some of the facilities upgrade. So we, we want to become an employer of choice. We, we definitely want to become an employer of choice. Uh, but it's a tight market out there as I'm sure everyone on the DIAS is aware because it is hitting every sector of, of the workforce.
So I, I appreciate that. Um, and with your discussions with Cabinet, I mean, has there been any talks about potentially offering bonuses to?
Well, we, we.
Other than the paramedics?
We have moved forward with the paramedic bonus. Um, we want to be very, very careful because again, we, we, we have some considerations as it relates to how much budgetary flexibility we have with what that looks like. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, and I'd have to check my sources, I think, um, KDPS, Kalamazoo Department of Public Safety, they were using ARPA money to, to address some of that bonus. So they, they got creative in that regard. So, uh, yeah, we, we continue to have those conversations.
Okay. Well, well, thank you and I appreciate that. I'm definitely supportive if there's anything council could do. Just write a letter of recommendation because I think that's, that's, uh, that's the kicker, right? Trying to get them in the door, get them sign that bonus and then our wages are comparable.
Yes, yes, sir.
So, so when you mentioned, um, uh, two new fire trucks and two new ambulances, have you ordered those yet?
Yes, they have been ordered and we will be looking to take delivery of the latter truck in November of this year. The two new engines, looks like we will be looking to take delivery in August of this year. And the two ambulances look as if we would be taking delivery sometime early part of July of this year, 2023.
Perfect. Yeah, because I was concerned with the cost of inflation, everything across the board's going up.
Yeah.
And, you know, speaking with other firefighters, they mentioned that you guys last year used twice the amount of diesel fuels you did the prior year. So did you guys figure that in the budget this year?
Yes, yes, sir, we did. Yes, sir.
Okay, no further questions. Thanks.
Oh, thank you. I have Councilmember Jackson and Councilmember Hussein.
Thank you. Just to piggyback on the hiring, you said that you're down 25 positions. You also said that you're having trouble attracting high-quality candidates that have high-quality moral character, I think you said. Uh, my question is, what is it about the application process that, um, or the people's resume where you can determine their moral character, especially if it's a young, maybe 18-year-old or whoever it is, where you're having this trouble?
Well, um, as you may be aware, we had some challenges with a previous psychological examination vendor. And working with HR, we pivoted away from that particular vendor altogether. So what we've done to address that is we've entered into a contract, uh, Fire Department and HR in partnership with this company called Criteria Corporation. And they provide personality assessments. They provide other competency, skill-based assessments. And we anticipate being able to utilize that criteria platform as a bridge. And I had a conversation with our HR Director last week. Uh, we will be building and creating an RFP for a new psychological examination vendor. Uh, the psychological exam is, is huge because, you know, we tend to focus a lot on, uh, a criminal background check. I, I'm interested in that by all means, but I'm also interested in the character background check. And we don't want to eliminate any potential candidates, but we do want to maintain our standard. And, uh, you know, there's this thought process that because the workforce is so thin and there's a lot of opportunity and folks are willing to accept just about anything to, to get in the door, to, to check the box and meet the number, we, we want to be very, very careful with that. That's why it's a very, very exciting time here in Lansing with what we're going through with the Public Safety Bond Initiative and some of the other things that I've spoken about here this evening. Again, we, we want to transition our potential candidates into careers. We don't want the shopping for the best offer, if you will. We want to recruit at a very high level, but the other side of the recruitment coin is the retention. So we want to focus some attention on retention and, uh, we, we get them in the door, we keep them in the door. They have a long, healthy career over the course of 20, 25 years. That's what we want to build too. So we're, we're working on that. Again, a lot of competition, but, uh, we, we cannot minimize the character, personality assessment component of our hiring process so that I, I, I have to feel comfortable that I can trust my firefighters.
That's right.
I've got, I've got to feel comfortable because at the end of the day, it, it's going to reside here. And, and one of the big pieces of ensuring that level of, of trust is understanding that we set the bar high, you've met the height of the bar, welcome to the organization, and now we're going to support you and your family over the course of 25 years as you have a safe career. That's, that's the objective.
Just to follow up. So it sounds like you're saying that some candidates don't pass the character test that's given by a third-party vendor, if you will. Are those like written questions that, I mean, like what are some of the, how, what's some of the criteria for that?
Well, I know one of the struggles we had with our previous vendor that we are no longer using, they were using and implemented an outdated model that was asking, they, they, they would forward a questionnaire to the candidates and the candidates needed to complete this questionnaire prior to a one-on-one interview with one of the psychologists or psychiatrists. Uh, there were some questions on the questionnaire about religious preference, sexual preference, and it, it just kind of set the candidates back. And we were wondering, why are the candidates not even completing the questionnaire? We conducted a deep dive and we found out that that particular vendor was, you know, using forms that had a 1983 date on it. And they never really upgraded or updated based on, you know, federal guidelines or whatever. So we stepped away from them. We've employed the Criteria Corporation to help us in this regard. Uh, we want to be as objective as we possibly can with what that looks like. Um, but there will always be some level of subjectivity involved with the process also. And another layer of the evaluation is that we will be employing a Fire Chiefs Panel at the entry-level hiring piece so that myself and my command staff, we can sit down and sit across the table from these candidates and really get a measure of, because they may have a story. Okay, they didn't do well with this assessment, but does that mean they're not a viable candidate? I don't think so. So we want to kind of employ as many layers and facet of the process to ensure that we are targeting that, that, that high-quality candidate. And, and if we're not, we understand why and we're able to kind of make the notes, have some conversations on what that looks like.
Thank you. I hope the new one works a little better than?
Absolutely. We do too. We, we feel pretty confident that it will. But again, we, this is just a bridge as we develop the request for proposal for a new vendor.
Okay. Next we have Councilmember Hussein, and I think that'll just about wrap it up.
Sure. And in a number of us on council, uh, we, we had, we were privy to, uh, some of the questions and some of the issues with, uh, the, the former, uh, third-party vendor. So we advocated as well to pivot away from that. So I'm, I'm glad to hear that. We are, we are in fact doing that. Uh, those questions were absolutely inappropriate. Um, that being said, um, a couple of questions came to mind when we were having, uh, a few discussions with regard to, um, attraction and then, and then I think you, uh, spoke to the retention. Um, the, although we're comparable, um, or maybe even competitive in terms of pay, in terms of benefits, isn't there a huge component in terms of the nature of the work here in the City of Lansing, the call volume, the nature of the call volume, the fact that there's this really staggering, I mean, when you look at EMS, um, you know, rides, uh, as compared to actual firefighting and suppression, um, it's, it's staggering. It's what, 90, north of 95% I think in terms of EMS. Uh, so is that a big part of it?
It, it is. That's actually a great question, Councilman, because apples to apples, our, our base salary is comparable, but then we have the candidates that will say, why would I go work for the City of Lansing when 80% of their call volume is EMS-related and they're running upwards of 30,000 calls a year? I can make the same money working for East Lansing and run less than 25% of that number. That is another component that we struggle with. That's why, you know, we want to focus on a lot of the ancillary components of our recruitment, the facilities upgrade with the bond initiative, the fleet upgrades with the new trucks, uh, the shifting of the culture to where now we are significantly more equitable and inclusive with our processes, which is bigger than just the diversity reflecting the community that we serve. So we, we, we're really wanting to focus some attention on some of those ancillary areas because we do have a very, very, very busy system. Um, I know 10 years ago, we had nine firehouses and ran 15,000 calls a year. Now we have six firehouses and we're running 30,000. So the trajectory is trending in opposite direction. And as a Fire Chief, it's just not sustainable. And I've been having some conversations with the mayor. We've been, we've been collecting data on justifying the cause to increase our resources, uh, because, uh, we, we can no longer just continue to stretch this rubber band and not expect it to pop because it's just not a sustainable model. So we'll continue to work with the mayor, identify what it is that he needs to come to you to talk about what some increases could look like for our organization. But the call volume is going up and our resources have gone down. We, we, we're going to have to address that probably more sooner than later.
And I, and I appreciate that. The other piece I wanted to talk about is, you know, the 25, uh, firefighters that we're down. You know, my mind, obviously, and I think most folks probably in the public, our minds immediately go to fire suppression.
Yes.
Uh, but we know that there are multiple divisions. So you have suppression, prevention, you have maintenance and alarm, you have training, you have administration. Um, is that, I mean, is that 25 numbers that spread out across those divisions or are we talking mostly fire suppression?
We're talking fire operations, fire suppression right now because as an entry-level employee into the organization, that's where you would start. And then you would build your, you, you would, you would build your transcripts, if you will, of training and exposure. And then you have an opportunity to move into some of the other divisions. But right now, we're talking about 20 to 25 positions in fire operations, fire suppression. That, that's exactly, uh, where, where we are with that.
Well, then, you know, my hat's obviously off to you. Um, have, have really respected the work that you've done since you've been here. Matter of fact, I mean, I knew we were in for good things when, when we met for coffee earlier. Uh, but in any event, um, to, to think that we are down in terms of funded firefighting, you know, firefighter positions, uh, to know that the, the call volume has doubled, um, and then to know that we are also sitting 25 short of what we're even funded. Um, you all still show up and do the job day in and day out.
Yeah.
Um, again, my hat is off to you and everybody within your department.
Yeah, that, uh, thank you for recognizing that. And I'll share that with our members. It's a testament to the character of, of our members. And again, we want that to be maintained. That's why that high quality and the, the moral courage and all of that is so very important with what we target with a potential candidate.
Okay. And Councilmember Spitzley is going to wind it up.
I am. I just, I just want to tell you, and I think, and I hope I would speak for everybody on council, how proud we are of LFD. We know that you were also on the front lines during that horrible time a few weeks ago and that you actually transported, um, some of the victims. And so we, we appreciate, um, what you guys did. We appreciate your actions. We know that you were also supportive of the, um, the Oakmas High School hoax. But, um, it, it, as we talk about that and, and knowing your numbers and, and knowing, you know, the, 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 the number of firefighters you have and that you need more, I think it brings it all the more to focus that, you know, you guys are out there and you're, you're putting yourselves in harm's way as well because you had no way of knowing when you went out there that, that everything was contained or where that person was. And so from, from the bottom of my heart, I would like to thank you guys for what you do, you know, personally. Um, thank you. Um, thank you for the high quality that you seek because I want somebody following my son in that has the same moral character that you do and that all the existing firefighters do. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Really, really appreciate the support from the DIAS and we're going to continue to work very, very hard for you folks, for this community. We really appreciate We really appreciate all the support.
Thank you, Chief, for coming and for answering our questions. And thank you all the men and women who uh work for the Lansing Fire Department. Um, as each one of us have set up here tonight, that we do appreciate the work that they do. And under the circumstances, um, sometimes with the equipment that they need to be replaced and um, and long hours and, and not having full staffing. Um, we know that it is a burden for them and, but we do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, that takes us to our presentation from the parks board. Who do we have here from the parks board tonight? Okay, sir. If you could come into the well, we would appreciate that. Yeah, you can sit there right next to Jane. That'd be fine. If you could introduce yourself and in our packet, we do have um the parks board report that uh was sent to us and sir, we will open it up to you.
Sure. Thanks for having me. My name is Mike Dombrowski. I sit on the park board as the vice chair and I also represent the first ward. Uh, so what you're looking at in front of you is the annual park report uh that the board puts together every year um to kind of talk about what we did in the, in the, in that year, what the department did and then where we uh have concerns in this case for this year. Uh, so the first point uh is that we finally are back up to eight people. We were, we've been down for a few years now, so we're back up to a fully-staffed board of, of eight people. So we're excited. Uh, and next point being that, um, yeah, the department uh has continued to provide services for residents. They continue to maintain parks. Um, as we heard earlier, they also run the forestry department and uh, you know, do as much as they can uh with uh what they're allotted. Um, but the main concern and probably the reason that I'm, I'm here tonight um is, is some concerns that we have around resident input to projects. Um, our role as the park board is to make sure that the department is running as effectively and efficiently as possible, uh, which personally translates to, are we getting the most bang for our buck with the money that we spend through the parks department? Um, and I think that's, you know, we're, we're spending a, a lot of money to, to do parks projects and to, to provide recreational opportunities. But it's hard to know if you're doing the right thing, right? You're, you're building these, you're doing these projects, uh, you're providing recreation opportunities, but did you, yeah, is that exactly what the people in the neighborhood wanted? Is that, is that the best way to build a trail for bicyclists and pedestrians? Um, and it's hard to know if you don't ask the residents. Um, so that, that's the main concern. Uh, more people showed up to parks board meetings this year than have in my five-year tenure uh on the park board, um, mainly around changes to the parks in their neighborhoods that they were not aware of happening. Mostly related to removal of infrastructure they had come to use. Um, a, a lot of it happened with Bancroft Park. The lights were removed without anyone telling anybody. The board is not aware of these projects for the most part, um, especially when it comes to like removal of infrastructure. Um, there, we uncovered some discussions between LEPA and the park department and the mayor around putting a driving range in Bancroft Park. Um, obviously a bit of a hot button issue with the, you know, the, the gross spec with, with the golf course and Ormond Park and Bancroft Park have all kind of been playing this dance. And so the, the neighbors are very nervous around discussions that are being had there. Um, and so we had a lot of, we had over thirty residents show up to voice their concerns around that um because, you know, it just sort of came out that, that there were discussions being had around this. The, the department uh has spent a, a, a big portion of our CIP project. The CIP money this year was spent on playground uh work. So where they remove a playground and they, they replace it with um something newer and better. Uh, and you know, the, so, one of the playgrounds that was replaced had a really cool sliding, like a spiral swing, a spiral slide. Uh, and that was like the main reason where the kids showed up to the playground and the one that they replaced it with did not have the playground slide, uh, the, the swirly slide. Um, again, no one was talked to around the project, right? Uh, not, there was never signs that said, hey, we're working on a, a project here, like come give us some input on what you want to see. Um, and so that's really our main concern. Um, because, I mean, we, we want to see the parks activated. We want, we want neighbors to have some feeling of ownership of their local parks. Like I helped, I helped come up with this decision that I wanted this here and now it's here. Um, and so, yeah, that's, we're, we're looking to, we're looking for help for how we can, how we can do that. Uh, it's, it's, yeah, it's not a priority for the department at the moment, um, as they don't have anyone doing this. Uh, we do, they do, uh, and we help them with their five-year Parks and Rec master plan. Um, but that's a really high-level document. That doesn't get down to like what type of slide you want to see in your, uh, in your neighborhood park. So. And then, yeah, the last thing there is just a list of CIP that we did for last year. Um, what we're trying to, another thing that the board is trying to do with CIP projects, those, that list of CIP project, CIP, and the word, uh, project is already there. The, that list usually comes from the department. We're trying to source those projects from the community. Um, so we did some work this year uh to get, uh, there's some money that's being allocated to Randy Park, which was a citizen-led initiative. That's the skate park down on Michigan Ave. So we're trying to make progress to, to getting more residential input to those projects to see those, uh, you know, so we build the right thing at the right time.
Okay, with that, we'll open it up for questions and I have council member Garza then council member Jackson.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, Mike. Uh, Mr. Dombrowski, is that how you say your name?
Yep.
Okay. Appreciate you being here. Thank you. And thanks for advocating for, for the, the community because I really caught some, some grief when they removed a couple of playgrounds in my ward and nobody really wanted to talk. Luckily, one of the Cedar Brook neighborhood was pretty active and adamant. Do you, I know you said that the administration isn't really looking at uh the public input. I mean, did they take it well? When you, when you, uh, I'm assuming it's Brett Koschinsky as far as reaching out to the community, trying to get some feedback before they just go and remove uh the play structures? Because what I'm seeing now is them removing like slides and equipment like that and they're putting up like climbing structures. And for instance, Cedar Brook, there was already climbing, like a rock there and then they put up another climbing structure next to it. Took down a slide and, and a number of jungle gym equipment. But to me, it didn't make sense to the community. It didn't make sense. Why would you put up another climbing structure when you already have one instead of putting swings? And uh, when I talked to Mr. Koschinsky, he mentioned that they're trying to get away from the larger uh material, the larger surfaces because of people are vandalizing um graffiti, that, you know, that type of stuff. But uh, has there been, I guess my, my question is, in the future, is he looking at potentially having some more community input before they start removing parks or playground equipment?
We're not aware of any plans to change their processes. So we, we've talked about it. Uh, and when this was first brought up, I mean, early last year, I guess where we're talking about the playgrounds, we, we said, hey, well, let's put up signs, let's, let's solicit some input, but it didn't happen. So.
It's too bad. It's unfortunate. Um, I guess, I guess my, my, my last question or comment would be, um, geez, it just slipped my mind. Um. Yeah, come back to me. Thank you.
Uh, that takes us to council member, uh, Jackson, Hussein and Brown.
Thank you. A similar question, basically, what is the best way? I guess we're here for resident input somewhat, but what is the best way for a resident to put in? Should they come to the park board meeting and meet with you all about things um that they want to see?
Yeah, so that, that's the best way so that we can be aware of the input being given uh and then we can bring it up at a, at a board meeting. So, yeah, that's, that's the best way to do it at the moment.
Thank you.
Okay, that gives me uh council member Hussein, Brown and Garza.
First of all, um, we appreciate your service, Mike. Five years, that's, that's commendable. Uh, we know these are volunteer, um, I wouldn't call it an obligation, but uh positions and, and the work can be substantial. Uh, so to do that for five years, that's incredible. Um, a couple of things. One, um, and I guess this is probably more for the administration than it is you. Uh, I would uh just underscore the comments earlier from Mr. Danaway. We have, in terms of the agendas and turn, and the minutes, I don't think, you know, we have any agendas or minutes maybe for the, for at least the last year, uh, years worth of board meetings, um, still. And so that's a problem. Even as we try to push information, which we, we try to do the best we possibly can as, as ward representatives and at-large members, um, there's really nothing ever to push out in terms of the park boards, park board meetings because there's nothing ever posted. Um, and so we need to make sure that those, those are up regularly and in a kind of a timely way. Uh, the other thing in, in terms of resident input with the board meetings, right now, are you all consistently meeting in one location? I would assume that's Foster. Are we rotating? Are we, what are we doing?
Yeah, so we are consistently meeting at Foster Community Center.
Okay. Is there, has there ever been any discussion to either rotate so that we are in those respective? As an example, we have um community centers in almost every ward, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, sorry, I got a mistake. Uh, but in any event, you know, whether they, and, and I understand that there is, there's merit to consistency in terms of a meeting location, but even if we were to move it to a more centrally located place, um, I, you know, I think, I mean, that's, that's pretty far east uh in terms of, you know, making sure that people are able to navigate, get on buses and things like that. So has there been any discussion regarding that?
We have talked about it. We talked about having some meetings in parks during the summer, during the warmer months. Uh, and those were planned to rotate. Um, but yeah, something that I could definitely bring up with the board to, uh, to, to try to garner more input from, from residents outside of the first ward.
Yeah, I think that'd be fantastic. Um, the other piece, um, is, you know, when we talk about playgrounds, I, I got quite a bit of feedback as well. Um, I think of as an example, Hingham Park, um, and the fact that it just like happened, right? And so people were incredibly surprised and some of those folks have been living in that area for quite some time. But they've grown very fond of obviously their playground and their, their kids have as well. Um, and, and I just wonder, you know, if they're, and it sounds like you did try to broach a couple of ideas with the administration, um, or I should say Brett. So I would encourage, um, Jane, whether those be onsite meetings, whether those be, you know, flyering of the neighborhoods with the contact information. Here's what we're going to do. If you have any input, you know, email us or, or maybe there's a digital survey or something of, of that nature. But there's got to be a way uh to get creative and to solicit some input uh because we're hearing loud and clear from folks that they want to be involved, right? That those, those recreation spaces matter to them, uh, add value to their, to their, you know, kind of immediate community. Uh, and again, I think they, uh, they want to be involved. Um, and then with regards to the CIP uh piece, um, you know, obviously I know what list was approved in two thousand and, uh, I'm sorry, for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. I know you all just went through your process and I, I was part of the park board, um, as was councilman Spitzley. So I know you guys get your stickers and you, you know, you determine what you're going to prioritize. Have you guys moved to really having a comprehensive, comprehensive conversation about geographic dispersion? And the reason why I ask that is it does seem like almost year in and year out. And again, um, now I'm looking to my left, no offense, uh, Councilman Cost, but we're always pretty firstward here. As an example, we are constantly funding uh projects, CIP projects at Foster Community Center, uh, particularly outside. So do we, do we talk about, I mean, because these tax dollars are coming in from all over the city, right? Do we talk about a dispersion of those dollars in those projects?
Well, you, so we definitely talk about it, but we don't. Our process does not enforce that there is equitable distribution. Um, it's, yeah, because a lot of the projects are, are definitely split up, split up over the, the city. Like the playgrounds, for example, were split up very evenly across the wards. Um, but yeah, some of those larger projects kind of get stuck in, in way, obviously one ward or the other. Um, but it's definitely something that we can look forward to. Look, we can look towards for future years is basically baking that into the system to say, to make sure that we have an equitable distribution amongst the wards.
That'd be great. And then I, I just want to give a, a couple of affirmations. I, I, I know you do great work. Um, and I hear a lot from Councilman Cost about the work you're doing. Uh, uh, but, you know, specifically in terms of my neck of the woods, um, Isaac Francisco is doing a great, great job. Um, uh, Tiester Walters is everywhere. Um, and so when we talk about residential input and, and creating additional opportunities, folks should know that some of these board members go above and beyond to be out of the community. Um, I think of Kimberly Whitfield. Um, obviously Brett Kippe has been with you guys forever. He's doing a fantastic job. Uh, so keep up the good work and I think we can all work collaboratively and, and, and try to be creative in terms of how we um, ensure that, you know, anybody that wants to provide input, uh, you know, has a pathway to do that. Uh, but I think you guys are doing a nice job now as well. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. We now have council member Brown then council member Garza.
Thank you. And thank you for being here. Uh, and I uh concur with um councilman Hussein on his sentiments. Uh, my question was, you know, and I thank you so much for being here and voicing concern. Is at the advisory board, um, members and as you meet, um, you, you guys are advisory in nature, so what exactly, if you're not being kept abreast of projects and, you know, being kind of a facilitator of community and constituent input, uh, where do you think that disconnect is as far as in, in the meetings? What exactly are you guys talking about or advising or, you know, what dialogue would you say is happening? And then where do you maybe see that there's a gap in connectivity in, in community versus, you know, implementing projects?
Yeah, so that's a good question. So I, I mean, I think the, I think the, the gap is really, we sort of, the board exists and we are basically told what the department is doing. I, I mean, outside of the CIP work, right, it's, here's what the department is doing. We're doing this project. Um, versus, hey, we're thinking about doing this project. We need to solicit input from the board. We need to solicit input from the neighbors. We need to solicit input from this user group. We collect all that. We come up with our first design. We say, here's the design. Is this, is, did we hear you correctly? Does this address your needs? Okay, let's work on the project. Um, that's the disconnect.
Thank you so much. Um, if, if I may, um, executive assistant, uh, Jane, uh, is that, um, why is what he's describing taking place, would, would you say, or are we, do we have the capability to change? I know we've talked about, um, and councilman Hussein has came up with a lot of good ways to get more constituent input. But if we have constituents who are serving in an advisory role capacity that are representing their neighborhood and their neighbors, um, why is it that even, you know, internally, it sounds like what he's saying, we don't have uh that, um, I guess, open dialogue that fosters a true input um, and, and a culture that people think that their voice is being heard, which is, I guess, the reason why we have advisory boards?
You're, you're asking a very um, uh, difficult question right now. And, and by that, I mean, I'd obviously have to speak with the, with the, with the director. I mean, it is important that when we speak with our, with our boards, that we ask for their input, that we ask for their advice when we, when it comes to projects and things of that nature. And, um, you know, we go, we utilize our boards so that they can help guide us as we prepare uh whatever CIP project that we're working on. Um, I will address this with the mayor and obviously with our, with our director and, uh, and see where we can go to improve uh this gap that he's talking about. Um, um, my understanding that, that is what we do. We do meet with, with our boards. We do provide them with information and that we do solicit their input. But again, um, I will address this matter with, with our mayor.
Well, thank you so much because we have, you know, we represent the people and we have, um, this gentleman here, the board member, right, sitting right next to you as the administration, saying this is not happening and these are issues as he's presenting tonight. And all of us, you know, especially as an at-large member, every ward, we are getting, um, that same feedback that he's communicated to, that people are not being a part of their community. When I look at why part of, why I love Lansing is all the parks and everything I grew up in and all the memories and, you know, even our health and wellbeing and our mental health and even we, we, you know, embraced our parks during COVID. It's a serious thing and it's part of our quality life in our community and our city. And so we have a park advisory board member and they've been so committed and we've seen all of them in the community and they're saying, we're coming to the table, having a seat at the table and not being heard. That's a serious issue, especially when we're talking about plastering, you know, uh flyers and going to the neighborhood. But right internally, administration to advisory board, this, this gentleman here is saying, that's not happening. So I really appreciate you going and back and seeing what we can do about that because that's the easiest solution and it, it doesn't cost anything.
No, definitely. I mean, sometimes, you know, there, there could just be a, a simple misunderstanding with, as it relates to communication. I, again, you know, addressing this matter with the director and with the mayor. You know, when we do meet with our, with our different boards and commissions, you know, they're there for a purpose and they're there to get uh their insight, advice, their, their uh outlook on, on various ideas. So again, um, I will speak with them and, um, and make sure that this indeed is happening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to kind of, one clarifying comment.
Sure.
I don't necessarily think that the advisory board should be the one providing input for all these projects. I want the people affected by the project to be solicited, to be solicited for input. Uh, I mean, I represent.
Be a conduit.
Yes.
Through the advisory board.
Yes.
Which is how it's supposed to be.
Yes, and if you're not, and, and, and we, we understand what you're saying, that the people also. But if you're saying you're an advisory member and you want to be a part of the project versus this is what's being done, what you described is what we're saying, we want to help change that and also have individual input as well.
Understood.
Uh, council member Garza, and then I have a couple of comments and then we'll move on to the next item.
All right, thank you. So, so I, I appreciate you, you being here, Mr. Dombrowski and I, and I.
So I, I appreciate you, you being here, Mr. Dombrowski, and I, and I do remember now what, what I was gonna ask. Now, when you spoke about, well, first I want to echo what councilman Hussein said about equitable distribution. I mean, I think that's important to make sure that all of our wards and every part of our city is being touched in an equitable way. But, but regarding the five-year plan, I know you guys said you didn't, you don't necessarily get into all the meat and potatoes, but has there been talk about the destination playground still? Because when I talked to Brett Kaczynski, he was mentioning one destiny, destination playground per ward. And I'm just wondering where we at, where we are at with that?
I do not remember offhand. I know, I know that as part of the CIP work, there was the playground renovations and the majority of them were like, kind of replacing in kind. So they were saying, okay, you have, there's a small one here. We'll replace it with a smallish one. And then there was a few parks that they're saying, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna invest more money into this, this playground structure. I don't remember where those were at, which, where they decided to put those. But that's still, as far as I know, it's still, that's what they're working on.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Just a, just a couple of items. Having sat on this dais for as many years as I have, I have watched the progression of the Parks Board and I do know that there was a time that you, as a Parks Board, would go out to a community, whether it was looking at a playground or whether it was looking at a major project that was happening and would go in there. You'd also bring out Bob Ford, who more often than not was the designer that would meet with the community to find out what they liked and didn't like. The boards would go up, you know, there'd be all of this interaction. And I'm saddened to hear that that, you know, has, has appeared to have gone by the wayside. It is something that they had done before. I understand with staffing and the reduction of staffing that that sometimes can make it more difficult. But I, I do believe, as you have indicated and many of us up here, the way to have a park that's utilized is to make sure that the people in the community around that park feel ownership to it and can relate to the things that are happening in it. To put in new playground equipment that, because it meets a certain criteria, because it'll be less vandalized versus the fact that you have an up and growing child base because housing has turned over and so you have younger children that need something different, then you have a park that isn't being used. And that, you know, that's not what we want to see because then the next thing that we hear is, because the park isn't being used, you know, do we think about possibly selling it off and, and those types of things? And so I think it's extremely important that as, and as a council member, I would ask the Parks Board to take a look at putting together a public participation plan and presenting it to the administration on how you believe that you can best utilize and get that public input before something is bought, before something is taken down, before something is moved versus afterwards. I sat on public safety when the Friends of Bancroft came to public safety and were quite concerned about the lights coming off and even councilmembers weren't aware that those lights had, you know, were going to be removed until after the fact. So I think there are different issues there that I think if we work together, we can come up with a solution for. We do this with the five-year plan and I realize there's a lot of activity with the five-year plan, but that should demonstrate, and we often talk in that five-year plan, of how we're seeking input from the community. So if we're only seeking it so that we can put the document into the state to get state funding, then we're talking out of both sides of our mouth. And so I, I do encourage you and to work, to come up with that with your park board members for the administration as, as that moves forward. I want to thank you for, for taking the time to putting this report together and being quite honest and vocal about what some of those concerns are. I also, for our speaker that was up here, Ms. Malkay, I think there are some definite concerns about the trees and I realize that we are doing some planting and, and things like that, but when we look at tree removal versus what we're replacing it with, I would encourage you to reach out to people like Ms. Malkay, who has, has some information on that along with, and as she indicated, if we lost Dominic and Irene Cahill, I'm, I'm not sure where our forestry department would be because of what they bring to that. So would encourage you to work also with them in putting a plan together on how we replace our trees and how we encourage people to help take care of those once new trees are planted. So those are my comments for this evening. And again, we want to thank you for being here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us down to our next item. This is affirming an appointment for the Community Corrections Board. This particular board is made up with Ingham County. They make all the appointments to this board. And even though the city sits on it, what we do is affirm their appointments. So I would turn to councilmember Hussein, who this was in his committee in public safety. And they didn't have a public safety meeting, so we're gonna get a discharge from that committee.
Sure. So as President Wood just explained, the resolution to affirm the appointment of Ms. Danielle Grubal was originally referred to public safety. We actually were scheduled to have a public safety meeting on February 21st. Danielle was here. She was present. She was ready to go. And unfortunately, at the last minute, due to staffing issues, we actually had to cancel that meeting. So I want to publicly apologize to Ms. Grubal. With that being said, what we want to do in order to stay true to the timeline that we had kind of committed to upon that original referral is to discharge this particular resolution from public safety and taking up this part of the committee. So what I would like to do is move officially the discharging of this resolution from public safety to community.
We have a motion to discharge. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously. And now with the explanation that you've had before, again, all we're doing is reaffirming what Ingham County has already done as part of the appointment process. So I would turn this over to Vice President Garza.
So moved.
So we have a motion. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously. Thank you, both councilmember Hussein and Vice President Garza. Next, we have the resolution for the fiscal year 20 CBG amendment to the annual plan in fiscal year 2021. Barb, we've got you and Doris in the audience. We had an explanation of this at our last council meeting. She also provided us with an updated report because if you remember, she had said that there were a couple of items in there that were incorrect. We are having the public hearing tonight, but we also did let councilmembers know because of the timing that we were being asked, as long as there were not a number of comments that would lead us to want to take additional time, that we would be voting on this, this evening as well. Are there any questions at this time? Yes, councilmember Spatafor.
No, I just wanted to thank Barb. I had several questions and we were able to chat on the phone last week. She clarified all my concerns and questions.
All right. Councilmember Hussein.
I see, I see that we have Raleigh Van Fossen, who is the executive director of Capital Area Housing Partnership, which is, is part of the CDBG substantial amendment to the action plan. I'm wondering if we can, we had a number of concerns come in. I actually talked to him earlier today. Number of concerns, debate to us via email regarding,
Ownership.
Maybe some, maybe some ownership and things of that nature. So I'm wondering if we can have him come down.
Absolutely. If you could come down to the well.
Yeah, and as, and as Raleigh comes in, again, what we did was we, we actually chatted earlier and I am much clearer as to why certain things might appear the way they do. As an example, if you do a, an LLC search with, with Lara. But in any event, there were some concerns that were broached that Mr. Van Fossen might be financially benefiting for projects beyond the salary he pulls down as executive director of Capital Area Housing Partnership. More specifically, some of those comments regarding personal interest in LLCs that make contract or subcontract on cap projects. So Raleigh, if you want to address that and maybe just kind of capture the spirit of our conversation earlier, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely, and, and always a pleasure and privilege to speak before you all. And so I'd be happy to answer that question and share what I spoke with you and a couple of your colleagues who I had the chance to speak with by emailing over the phone. The, the simple and shortest answer to that concern is no. No one affiliated, employed, or volunteering with the Capital Area Housing Partnership in any way, shape, or form is financially benefiting from this project outside of the housing partnership themselves being the sole developer. I think the confusion of whomever may be out there, be out there in the community doing a Lara search is their misunderstanding of what it means to be a resident agent for an LLC corporation here in the state of Michigan. State of Michigan, Michigan compiled law requires an LLC to appoint a resident agent or the company that's being created must appoint a resident agent. I, as the executive director, or anybody in my shoes in this position, anytime our nonprofit forms a subsidiary organization, just by the fashion of having that job, would be the appointed resident agent. The resident agent simply is there to be, one, you have to have a mailing address on file with Lara and then you have to have somebody appointed as that agent to receive any notices from the state, any lawsuits, demands, et cetera, communication from Lara. Resident agent has nothing to do with ownership and the question of ownership. It's simply more of a notification tool for Lara. But to get to the question of ownership, ultimately, the nonprofit would create an operating agreement between the LLC. And so as I shared with you earlier today, we created an LLC called 1900 South Cedar LLC. That is also the address of the property. And we do that as a tool and a function required by the state, Michigan State Housing Authority, to implement the low-income housing tax credit award. We, as a nonprofit, can't be the recipient of it directly because we have other affordable housing projects that we've owned and created here in the community. And because of certain rules and regulations with Mishta, they require us to create a separate subsidiary every time we do a new development. This isn't new practice. This is, you see this across the state with affordable housing developments. To go a step further though, since we're a nonprofit, this is actually the first project in our 30-year history in which we will be the sole general partner. That's a huge accomplishment for us. Not every developer, especially maybe more new nonprofits developer, have that ability and privilege. That's much credit to our board of directors for being fairly fiscally conservative with our balance sheet and getting us to a position where we don't need a for-profit partner on the side helping us get along. This is truly a community effort to redevelop this building. So since we are the sole general partner, we then would look at our articles, our bylaws, which would govern that I as an employee, nor can any of my board members therefore then have a financial interest or stake in in the work we do. So I hope that clears up the question and affirms that the LLC created, yes, you'll find my name along with my name on all the other properties that the housing partnership owns currently in Ingham County, but that's simply as a resident agent, which has nothing to do with ownership of the deal.
Does that answer your question?
It does. I greatly appreciate that. Since we have you down here, I do have one other question.
Please.
Could you talk a little bit about, you know, we're looking at 76 units. My understanding is, you know, one, two to three-bedroom units.
Correct.
19 which are gonna be supportive housing. And I think in the documents, it says that those supportive housing units will be used to house homeless of the highest need.
Sure.
Which is incredible. I think that's awesome. However, that also means that we are really going to, because we're not just worried about sheltering. We're worried about livability, safety, quality, et cetera. And so what does the management, because it is, it is, I mean, at the end of the day, it's gonna be, it's gonna be challenging. It's going to be difficult. But I think, you know, if, if done correctly, I think, you know, it can be transcendent for folks. So in any event, what does the management look like? What does that look like?
So we do not self-manage. That is not a part of our operations as a nonprofit. I shared with you earlier, we've got, we're proud to be owners of nine different properties here in Ingham County. That's about 450 units. That highlights Jefferson Street Square in downtown Mason, Deer Path Apartments in the city of East Lansing, Bailey Center in the city of East Lansing. Actually, a majority of all units we've created are outside of the city of Lansing. Walter French would certainly be the newest of our development pool. And so when we look to develop a project management agent is one of the first conversations we have outside of maybe your general contractor, your architect and so forth. We work with the state to identify the greatest and the bests that are interested in doing this type of work. And by this type of work, I mean working with affordable housing projects. So this property for, will be contracting with KMG Prestige. They're a statewide management company with expertise in affordable housing projects. They'll have two site managers specifically hired in at the Walter French project that deals with residents daily and so forth. On top of that, we'll have an additional maintenance, two positions as well. And so there'll be a management team onsite of four with KMG. But with this project, we're taking a step further and we're relocating our headquarters for Capital Area Housing Partnership to be in this building along with a daycare provider. So you'll not only have the management onsite every day, but you'll certainly have myself and our team. And so because we're having 19 units dedicated to those who are currently homeless, whether they're individuals, but it could also be families, since, as you mentioned, we'll have some three-bedroom units as well, we have to show the state what we call a permanent supportive housing plan. So we have to bring onsite services. We'll actually have employed PSH resident case manager who has to be onsite providing case management at least 20 hours a week to those 19 units. We have to show proof that we're bringing in outside agencies who have committed at the start of this application to providing onsite. So we've got commitments from Michigan Works. We've got commitments from local AA and NA groups. They have to come onsite. So it can't be just a standard letter that says, oh, sure, you can refer somebody to us. They have to go a step further and tell me as the owner and ultimately tell state that they're gonna show up onsite. And so that leads to some of the amenity space that we create. So we don't, we're, we're going a step further than just creating a simple community room. We've ensured that there's gonna be at least three single suite offices so that some of these clients, as they wish, can do some more private meetings with some of our providers instead of housing them in their unit for whatever that reason may be. It's a challenging task, but that's what we're about. And I think that's what separates us from some of the other affordable housing developers you may see is that we're here. And so when there's a problem at this property or a property any, that we may have in our portfolio, you get to hold me accountable and you get to ultimately hold who's, who's in charge of me, which is the 15 board members of the housing partnership. They're all your neighbors. Everybody who's a board member of our organization lives here in the tri-county community. So we can't run, can't cross state lines. Certainly, you've got my personal contact information and we're open about sharing that. But I can't lie to you and say that owning property and managing properties, that it's gonna always be perfect, especially when you're dealing with some vulnerable populations. But I like to think what sets us apart is we, we own up to what issues are brought forward and do our best to take care of the folks who call our, our buildings home.
Okay, thank you. And for the public, we, it's almost seven o'clock. We will be starting shortly our council meeting, but we're going to councilmember Brown at this time.
Thank you, Council President. And thank you for being here. And I was gonna ask, what makes this project different? And you've answered every question, so thank you for your commitment and thoughtfulness as a group that you guys are really looking at supporting people in their home.
I'd like to add on and, and I appreciate you thinking my answer is enough, but I, I tell you, it's been five years in the making since some of you first heard us come forward and take ownership of this building and the community's seen it sit like that in that condition for the 15 years prior. This is a building, one of the few remaining buildings in this community that's on the National Historic Registry List. It's not often that we as a community get to see a developer interested in finally breaking ground and preserving that history. So as much as I'm excited about the affordable housing opportunity, as much as I'm excited about the daycare opportunity, as much as I'm excited about us being able to relocate offices, I'm excited about the historic preservation. I'm excited about the net zero energy consumption and impact our construction will have on this project. We are checking any and every box we can because that's how competitive this market is. And so I, ask me again in 18 months, when hopefully we're hosting a grand opening, because I really think it's a gem here in the community and I'm sick and tired of driving down Cedar, seeing it in the conditions it's in. And I'm, I'm sure I share that with most everybody here.
Okay, thank you. Again, this is, this amendment is for $815,324 for Walter French and $891,236.89 for a public facility for a congregate homeless shelter, non-congregant. and $891,236.89 for a public facility for a congregant homeless shelter, non-congregant homeless shelter. So with that, Vice President Garza.
All right, thank you. I moved the resolution for fiscal year 2020 CDBG amendment and fiscal year 2021 CDBG amendment to the annual action plan.
All right, we have a motion. Any more questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oath passes unanimously. And just asking council members, we are going to be having our BWL joint meeting. There was a reminder that was sent out to you about possible questions that you would have. If you could please get those to Sheri, any items that you'd like to have BWL discuss with us by Wednesday, so that we can forward those onto the board. Again, that's our annual BWL meeting. Okay? And with that, we will adjourn and come back here in five minutes. Thank you. We are adjourned.